It's five o'clock and this special council meeting is called to order. And the invocation will be given by Pastor David Payne, First United Methodist Church. Let's stand.
Let's pray. Heavenly Father, we thank you for the magnificent place that we have the privilege of living in. We thank you for those who give themselves to service of their community. We thank you for the many blessings that you share with us. And God, we give you whatever happens here tonight. We ask that you would reign over that. We ask that you would give discernment and wisdom to our leaders. And we praise and thank you for who you are. And we pray that in Jesus' name.
Please join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. As we do the pledge of the flag, I'm reminded that last year we were asking for prayers for Judy Eichner's and George's daughter-in-law, who was headed off to a year in Afghanistan. And she came back last week. And there was great rejoicing. Great rejoicing by the Eichner's son and those two little grandsons.
Thank you. And thank you all for your prayers.
All right. Okay, at this time, we will have statements about going city council members. First Vincent Vogel and then George Barudy.
Do we have five minutes or can I get a little longer? First, I just want to thank my supporters. I hope I served you well. It was an honor and a privilege to give back to the city and the people that I grew up with. This experience has tested me in more ways than I could imagine. Also, I want to thank my bosses, which happened to be my father and uncle. They allowed me the time to be a council member, and I believe I did the best that I could. I have a couple of stories I want to share that I thought were funny. As I was walking down the street one day, a man came up and asked me what time the time is on my watch. Yeah, and I said, "That's for you to know." Within a few days of being elected, I received a phone call. A person was cussing me out. It took me off guard, but I believe we were able to work things out. Mark, I think you remember that experience. That was kind of a shocker. We also went to a newly-elected officials conference in San Antonio. That is where I learned about the effective tax rate. Sorry again, Mark. George was sitting next to me, and his belt rubbed against the chair and made a loud farting noise. I almost died when everyone in our, uh, looked at us. What really got me was when George realized everybody was noticing him. He tried to reenact it to prove that it was his belt. And it made it even louder.
I'm wearing that belt right now.
Yeah, I think I died a little. I definitely died a little inside that day. And the other one is how can we forget when Mark's bottle of water fell over during work? Some of you may not find these funny, but I believe, uh, I've been telling council all year that I may get older, but I'll never grow up. You also have to take every funny moment you can because there's not many. One of my favorite things about, uh, was talking to people. It was great. Not many people knew I was a council member. So when I would ask them questions, they were very honest, almost sometimes overly honest. Uh, most of these issues I brought up were quickly addressed. And I do appreciate the relationship I had with Mark. And he was quick to get these things done. So thank you, Mark. Um, here's just a few accomplishments that council has done that I would like to highlight. Saved the soccer fields by the landfill. Increased our street budget. Worked with the farmer's market to bring them downtown. Lowered the property tax. I hope the new council will consider doing this this year in the budget, considering the appraisals. We also added school zone lights on Water Street near the Catholic church. Stopped signs at Water and G Street. Saved a bridge at Loop 534 near the city park. Put new basketball goals at Carver Park and Power Wash Court. I hope the city keeps up with that. Uh, helped the process for new projects at the community garden. Added language that the city will not use eminent domain to acquire land or easements for the River Trail. Put together Christmas Eve meal that served over three hundred plates. Had worked to organize a potential music festival. Put the visitors forum back at the beginning of the meeting. Simplified board applications. Won the first and maybe the last mousy horse race. We'll see next year. Uh, supported, almost probably annoyed staff to try to fix their food truck ordinance to make it less restrictive. And also supported and pushed the idea of a housing development on Loop 534 across from the high school. I hope the new council takes these ideas and completes them. I wish you all the best. You will enjoy it. It is fun, so let it be fun. I'm always open and willing to share and discuss issues with you. I do believe we all want Kerrville to be the best. We just have different priorities. I hope you are open and willing to hear ideas from others. We all live very different lifestyles and things affect us differently. Um, don't go chasing waterfalls. Stick to rivers and lakes that you're used to. I hope I have inspired young people in Kerrville. I would like to see more involvement from the younger generations here. No offense to the old people. I said no. I said no offense, so you can't get offended. It doesn't have to be old people always leading our town. We have a lot of, uh, great people that work for the city, and I want to thank them for the jobs that they do. And, uh, one last thing, since we haven't put the city council photo up, I would like to have it if y'all aren't gonna use it.
It's unique.
Look at it.
Yeah, oh yeah, yeah. Would you locate for me the, uh, two commendations for the council members? Okay, Mr. Barudy?
Yeah, I had a speech too. I'm not really sure I'm gonna... I don't really know what to say in it. So I will just, the first part was really just a thank you to Vincent for being here tonight. If you, um, if you haven't paid attention to this particular event in the last five years or so, the outgoing council members have not been showing up. And, you know, my dad always says that other people say it too. The beauty of a democracy is we, every time we have an election, it's basically a, um, you know, it's a mini-revolution in a sense, but it's a peaceful one. And part of that is transferring it over. And, um, out of respect to the process and democracy in general, we're both here, um, because we're supposed to be and because we want to be. And it's just the way it should be. And so I'm thankful to him for being here and enlightening the, uh, the experience, um, all throughout. I have enjoyed my time on council, um, you know, playing the role of eyes, ears, and advocate, I guess you'd say, for the citizens of Kerrville. I'm not going anywhere. We got asked that question by the press, or, you know, what are you gonna do? I'm not really going anywhere. I'm just basically changing seats. It's the same, same stuff I did before I was on council. Um, same stuff I did while I was on council. It's all, it's all about basically just educating and forming and, um, working in the community that I, that I live in. You know, in retrospect, I do see our term in sort of two distinct pieces. The first year, we seemed to accomplish a lot where we were, um, able to give back to the citizens. Not so much giving to the citizens, just giving back to them. Giving back what they, what should have always been there. If you understand tithing in, in church, you're basically just giving money back to God that was His to start with. Well, it's the same sort of thing. He, Vincent mentioned the soccer fields. We just gave, we just gave them back. Um, we gave back the rightful place of the council meetings. He talked about the visitors forum. And then we gave back some of their taxes, which were theirs all along. Second year, it was a little less of that. I think we all sort of lost sight of the issues that were, uh, the people's issues. And I'm hopeful that, and expect the new council will kind of return us back to that, um, where we're focused there. And knowing, um, knowing that people don't necessarily want to hear my advice, just indulge me with one piece of advice, um, is don't fear discourse. You know, and work harder to govern from the common ground instead of, um, this, this deal where we, where governance is done by, well, like a pendulum swing. Where, you know, you swing power this way, and you do things this way, and you swing it this way. Try and get to that, um, that common ground and govern from there. It, it'll work a lot better. It'll be a lot more efficient, and, um, you can get a lot more done. To, to all the new council members and to the existing ones. I'm seeing Kim. Where's Gary at? Oh, okay, sorry. So, I mean, I don't want to just yell it out. There you are. So, so the new council members and existing ones alike, please always remember that the reward from winning an election is a seat at this dais. But the responsibility from winning the, an election is far greater and more profound. So, because you now have the honor and the privilege of having a servant's seat at the feet of the citizens. And I'm sure you will do us proud, so it's not really, you know, telling you something you didn't already know. Um, and that's pretty much it. That was a lot less than five minutes, right? And, um, yeah, yeah. So, um, and, you know, like I said, I, it, it has been fun. I mean, it truly has, even to the, um, the people that disagreed with me, some of which sitting right here. I actually enjoy politics. And so, um, I would expect to go forward with, with that same discussion, whether it's from all of us being out there or however that works. Don't, don't be afraid of that. Um, you know, just questions. They aren't, they aren't bad. It's not a bad thing. So I guess that's, that's all I have.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Barudy. And here is a document of appreciation from the city. Thank you for your service and your hard work. And with this one, with Vince, Vincent, you need to sign right there. And then pass it on to Vincent Paul though. Oh, Vincent?
Yes.
I'm not sure. I want to give you that commendation, considering your remarks about old people.
You're not gonna read these? You're not gonna read these?
I will. Let me, let me. Yeah, I will make it official. Okay. I'm gonna read, uh...
Do the exact same?
Whereas George Barudy and Vincent Vogel have served as council members place one and two for the seat of Kerrville since May 2017 and have shown sincere concern for the welfare of the citizens of Kerrville. And where both continuously demonstrated an interest in growth and development of the city of Kerrville during their terms in office. And whereas we as members of the city council wish to express our appreciation to George Barudy and Vincent Vogel for many contributions during the tenure of office from May 2017 through May 2019. And whereas George Barudy and Vincent Vogel during his term on, during their terms on city council, served as, George did as mayor pro temp. Uh, he served on the 2050 steering committee, and he worked with city boards in the following capacities. A member of the Economic Improvement Corporation, a member of the interview team for the Kerrville-Kerr County Joint Airport Board, the Building Board of Adjustment and Appeals, the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board, and the Planning and Zoning Commission. Now therefore, being resolved by the city council of the city of Kerrville, Kerr County, on behalf of the citizens of Kerrville as well as for ourselves individually, we wish to express our sincere gratitude for the invaluable services rendered by George Barudy, and I'm gonna come back to Vincent in a minute, and for serving honestly, fairly, and efficiently the best interest of the, of the community at all times. Vincent, pass yours back to me because there's some specifics there. Whereas Vincent Vogel during his term on city council worked with the Airport Strategic Planning Committee, Playhouse 2000, and the Kerrville 2050 Steering Committee. He served on city boards in the following capacities. A, a member of the interview team for the Building Board of Adjustments and Appeals, Food Services Advisory Board, and the Recovery Community Coalition. Thank you.
Thank you.
Let me say one more thing because I, I promised my mom I'd do this, and I forgot to do it first. Um, so today's her birthday, so, uh, happy birthday to my mom. And, um, so the cake and ice cream, I, is there cake? We're gonna have cake? All right, so just so you all know, um, if you get asked, that was for my mom. In the video, just, that's the way we're gonna play it.
Good, good. Okay, Gary wants to go down here and get a picture.
You don't want to know, Mayor.
No, no, no. No, it's not me.
No, I think that could be our...
But that's where I'm supposed to go. Someone sat on a duck. If you guys remember last year with Mr. Ferguson, that was, he had the jacket, right? But it wasn't me. I didn't do it.
There's a video of five of them dancing, but we weren't able to show it tonight.
That is really good.
I think Vincent's missed his career opportunity. He should have been a film producer.
One more thing, Mayor. I was in a play. Delane, you were in a play. I did the polar bear plunge last year, so someone's gonna have to pick up the slack.
Yeah, Delane.
I think I'm out of town. I'm pretty sure I'm out of town.
I volunteer Delane. I've done it one time.
There's a Dunkin' Boo. A Dunkin' Boo.
Now, oaths of office given by the Honorable Stephen...
Resolution. We have to do this.
Oh, yeah, 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 okay.
Details.
All right. The resolution related to the total votes, um, in the recent election.
Resolution number 12, 2019, canvassing the returns and declaring the results of the May 4th, 2019 city general election. And please note that we did get all official results yesterday, the 13th, and I did place the official results at your, your chairs.
Okay. I don't need to read the totals, do I?
No.
Okay.
You don't? Okay.
All right.
I'll make a motion that we accept the resolution or whatever we were saying.
Okay, all right. Do we get a second?
I'll second.
I want a second now.
Yeah, Vincent, okay, all right, your last one. Okay. All in favor of resolution number 12, 2019, let it be known by the raised hand? And it carries unanimously. All right, now, Judge Ables, if you, if the two candidates are now elected, will come forward.
Uh-huh, we have to.
We do this first, right?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. So we leave.
Oh, yeah, yeah. Okay. Yeah.
Before I swear you in, after you've had your season of scrutiny, I have some old positive word for you from President Theodore Roosevelt, who was asked to comment about public service. And here's what he said. He said, "It's not the critic who counts. The credit belongs to the man or the woman who enters the arena of public service, whose face is marred by dust and sweat but continues to drive, strive valiantly. Who at worst appears she fails, at least fails while daring greatly, so that their place shall never be with those cold and timid souls who know neither victory nor defeat. Congratulations on your victory."
We have Kim's out first. All right. Kim, would you raise your right?
Or you, whip hand on the Bible there and then... I bet you Austin will hold that card for you if you do that, Austin.
This is not my practice.
Repeat after me. I, Kim Clarkson,
I, Kim Clarkson,
do solemnly swear
Do solemnly swear.
that I will faithfully execute the duties
That I will faithfully execute the duties
of the office
Of the office
of Kerrville City Council Member, Place Two
of Kerrville City Council Member, Place Two
of the state of Texas
State of Texas
and will to the best of my ability
and will to the best of my ability
preserve, protect, and defend
preserve, protect, and defend
the Constitution
the Constitution
and the laws of the United States
and the laws of the United
and of this state
and of this state
so help me God.
so help me God.
Congratulations.
Kim, step here for now.
All right, Gary, would you raise your right hand? I, Gary Cochran, I, Gary Cochran, do solemnly swear that I will faithfully execute the duties that I will faithfully execute the duties of the office of the office of Kerrville City Council Member, Place One of Kerrville City Council Member, Place One of the state of Texas of the state of Texas and will to the best of my ability and will to the best of my ability preserve, protect, and defend preserve, protect, and defend the Constitution and laws the Constitution and laws of the United States of the United States and of this state and of this state so help me God. so help me God. Congratulations.
Thank you, Judge.
Presentation is dismissed. Uh, the names are the authority of the city of Kerrville, Texas. This is certified at a general election held May 4th, 2019. Gary Cochran is duly elected council member, Place One. Okay. In the name and by the authority of the city of Kerrville, Texas, this is certified at a general election held May 4th, 2019. Kim Clarkson was duly elected council member, Place Two. Let me say this to supporters. Support, pray, encourage. But also, when they get, um, a lot of criticism and opposition, pray a little harder. One of the things you encounter is, on the city council, you take votes that can make people mad or disappointed. In my first three months, I had to vote against people who had supported me in my election because I didn't think it was right, what they were proposing. So you lose some friends. So keep supporting and praying and encouraging. Now, I want to say one other thing. When they appear, history is made. Majority of women on the Kerrville city... And it really is exciting. All right? Gary. Gary.
Not leaving already, are you?
I thought you'd quit already.
No incidents or popery anywhere.
Now, there is an opportunity for new council members to make a statement. And we'll begin with Place One.
First, to the previous council members that served, I want to tell you all thank you, uh, for your service. Uh, I'm beginning to realize it's not as easy as it looks sitting out there. And I'm sure there'll be a lot more lessons. Uh, thank you to everybody. It's an honor. It's a privilege. I don't know if you saw the Kerrville Daily Times article this morning, uh, from their editorial staff, but it rang true to me because I thought it was a great article. And kind of a mini phrase of it was, in part of it, it said that serving on this council is an immense and even sacred responsibility. And I could not agree more. I know there are people out there that were in this election that had some concerns that I might not, uh, that I would just follow the crowd, that there would be rubber stamping, lockstep, I've heard used. And I want to tell you those people, you don't know me very well. There's gonna be times in this council when we're going to agree, and there's gonna be times when we don't agree. But the one thing that I can pledge, and that to the very best of my ability, the decisions that I make are gonna be based on one thing. And that's what's in the best interests of the citizens. And I look forward to the next two years. Thank you.
Korea?
Okay. Last night, I spent a little time thinking about these past few months, and I realized that no one out there had told me it would be easy, but many people did tell me that it would be worth it. I then came across a quote from author Scott Hammerly that says, "We must be drawn to the idea of where we want to go more than we dislike the idea of all the work it's going to take to get there." Find a lot of truth in that statement, and I plan to keep this in mind as we continue the hard, yet rewarding work that lies ahead. I want to start by thanking my family, my friends, and everyone that contributed their time and resources. Not only those that I already know or knew, but the amazing people I met along the way. An extra special thank you goes out to my husband, Austin, for keeping our family running smoothly during this time. For me to spend time telling you how amazing, uh, the love I experienced during this campaign would take longer than I have right now. I want to thank the city staff for the time that they took to meet with me, and now the time that they will take to get me oriented to this new position. All of us citizens of Kerrville shouldn't, could not ask for a better, more professional group to protect and advance the interests of our city. To the past city council members and mayors, thank you for providing this solid foundation for our city. I promise you, as well as all of the citizens of Kerrville, that I will always follow the oath that I just swore to uphold, and I will make decisions for the good of the whole. To our current mayor and council members, I want to thank you for your support. I have been watching and learning from you, and I have been looking forward with great excitement to the opportunity I now have to work with you. On Friday, I had lunch with Vince Vogel, and he asked me again why I had decided to run and what I hoped to accomplish. I realized my answer had not changed from the beginning of this race, and I found comfort in that. It's simply this. I want to make decisions now that lead to a vibrant future for our community. I want my 92 and 94-year-old grandparents and others that are aging in place here to continue to live in a city that cares for and protects its elderly. I want my parents and other business owners and employees to have a climate where they can be successful running a business and making a living. I want families to want to raise their children here because Kerrville offers an exceptional quality of life. And I want the children growing up here to have the desire and the ability to live in Kerrville as adults because they want to live here, because they can find good jobs and they can afford to live here. I'll close with one little story. That's it. I'll be done. Joe Herring, former mayor, councilperson, and Kerrville historian spoke with my son Weston recently. She knows this is gonna be about you. He knows both of my sons through his wife Carolyn. She was their first grade teacher. Joe was telling Weston how proud he was of how hard Weston had worked on his mom's campaign. And Weston replied with sincerity, "We couldn't have done it without you." To which Joe replied, "I really have done very little compared to you," and referred to the photos that he'd seen of Weston and all of the events that he had attended during the campaign. And Weston, not straying from message, replied, "Well, we certainly appreciate all of your support." I end this story not because I'm announcing my son's future political career, but because Weston is right. Seeing you here tells me that no matter where you're coming from, you care about the city and its future. Council members can't do this job without knowing what all of you, the citizens of Kerrville, what you want and what you need, whether we agree or agree to disagree at times. Please join me in finding ways to support all citizens of Kerr... Please join me in finding ways to support all citizens of Curville, all citizens. Thank you for your support. "I couldn't have done this," as my son would say, "without you."
All right. Um, we, we have an opportunity now, if you want to, to have cake and punch and just visit outside. So, uh, do I hear a motion to adjourn? And let me say, if you decide to stay for the six o'clock council meeting, we got a whole bunch of recognitions, uh, in terms of memorial, police memorial, honoring policemen who've fallen. And, uh, the, the Shriner shooting team, and mental health month, and then two or three items after that, okay? All right, do I hear a motion to adjourn?
I say move.
There, a second.
I'll second it.
Wait, let's give it to Newby.
Oh, okay.
I'll second that.
Go second, all right, okay. All right, okay, all in favor say, yeah, raise hand. All right, we are adjourned.